Welcome to Newport County Votes, a series of forums featuring candidates for local and state offices. I'm Sheila Maloney, Executive Editor of the Newport Daily News, and we're here live on Wednesday, October 15th. This year, we are combining the Daily News editorial meetings and televised candidate forums on NCTV-18. First, I would like to introduce the other members of the Daily News Editorial Board, Publisher Albert K. Sherman Jr., and Opinion Page Editor Gary Ruff. We will use the information provided in these meetings and election previews that will run in the Daily News the week before the election, as well as in determining any endorsements that we make. And tonight, we are pleased to welcome the five candidates for three seats on the Tiverton School Committee. The candidates are Sally Black, Danielle Coulter, Denise DiMederos, Carol Herman, and Deborah Ann Polish. Thank you all for being here tonight. Before we start, some general guidelines about how these forums work. There are no formal opening or closing statements, and there is no formal time clock for answers, although we ask candidates to limit their answers to allow for as many questions as possible. As the moderator, I have the discretion to refocus answers and answers that run long or ask a follow-up question. We will start with the first candidate in alphabetical order, and give each candidate an opportunity to respond, rotating who receives a question first. And I will strive to give each candidate approximately equal time. So let's get started. Sally, as an incumbent, what was the key factor in your decision to run for reelection, and what particular qualifications do you bring to the job?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank you all for having us. And I will tell you that I am running because education is my passion, and has been since 1967, when I graduated from Salve Regina and started working at Head Start in Fall River. I did not need the President nor Congress to tell me you never leave a child behind. My six children were educated in Tiverton School Systems. They're all college graduates, the best investment we ever made. And I want every child, each child, to have an equal opportunity for an excellent education as my children did. It was an amazing, amazing thing that we went through. My qualifications are: I am a special education teacher. I am the liaison to the town council. I've been going to the budget committee meetings for five years, never missed but one to see. I had to step out of my educational silo where I was comfortable, and meet everyone in the barn, and figure out what we could do in this town to balance the budgets, to see what the police and the fire... I always wear three pins: a firefighter, a police officer, with a school committee in the middle, to remember there's one pie and we all need to be budgeted. I always wear them, and everybody comments on it. Those are my qualifications, and I'd like to continue. I've been on the negotiating committee for the contracts. The one contract was solved, the other one... We just met tonight. I just left the table tonight. We're still meeting with the teachers. But the Council 94 contract was solved, and we were very happy about that. Very equitable for the town, and the taxpayers, and the teachers, and our staff, because they are wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Danielle, what made you decide to run for school committee this year, and what qualifications do you bring to the position?
Well, I'm fairly new to town by Tiverton standards. We're going on five years now, and have been following politics all along. But after the last financial town meeting, it really ramped up some of the interests that we initially had. And I really felt that the school committee, I could benefit some of the outcomes and bring... I'm a local businessperson, and so bringing some of the common sense budgeting into the program without cutting some of the programs, and looking at it from kind of a business standpoint, might enhance how we've been going forward, and hopefully make a difference in the future.
Okay, thank you. Denise, you're an incumbent. What made you... And it's been a tough couple of years, as Sally mentioned with negotiations and so on. What made you decide to run for reelection?
Well, I think I've been on the school committee for eight years. I've been chairman for five. Prior to that, I was very involved with education, because my children were starting kindergarten. And actually, my oldest is just graduating and onto college. I decided to run again, because there's still some unfinished business that I wanted to complete. One would be the teachers' negotiations, of course. The second would be the building projects, which I was there from the very start, almost 10 years ago, before I made the school committee. And I felt that I needed to help that stay online and finish that completion date. And I also have felt, for the last year, I've been fighting very hard to be fiscally responsible, to maintain a budget. And hopefully, my experience will help next year, because next year will be tougher than any other year that we've seen. We have to keep the percentage at 4.75, and I'm hoping that my experience will help us do that, and will help the town.
Okay, thank you. Carol, what made you decide to run for school committee this year, and what qualifications do you bring to the position?
Well, first and foremost, I'm running because I want to have a positive impact on student achievement in Tiverton. And I believe I have the background, the skills, and the experience to do so. I've volunteered, I've worked, and I've taught in a variety of educational settings for over 20 years, everything from elementary school through college level. I presently work as a school librarian in Massachusetts, where on a daily basis, I have to interact and work effectively with students, with teachers, with administrators, and with school committees. I have to put together a budget, I have to defend my budget, I have to find ways to make that budget go farther every year. I'm also running because I'm very passionate about education. It's very important to me. I believe that it has a positive lifelong impact on the individual, and a positive impact on society at large. I truly believe that our democracy depends on well-educated and well-informed citizens, and a free public education for all provides our democracy with those well-educated and well-informed citizens.
Okay, thank you. And Deborah, what made you decide to run for school committee this year, and what qualifications do you bring to the position?
Well, one of my motivators would be having a child in the system. I think any parent that's ever coached soccer, who's ever run a Brownie troop, recognizes that there is quite a bit of motivation to get involved with any organization when you have a child who's impacted by that organization. Secondly, I really want to support the community. I think that our public education is one of the greatest things that we can do for our community and for our children, and I want to support that and support our community with that. Qualifications that I might bring are, while the school's not a business, you do have to be careful to bring some basic business skills in, to make sure that we're providing an education with, you know, efficient, effective dollars. I have spent over 20 years in finance and accounting, and have a fair amount of experience administering budgets, overseeing budgets, aligning budgets with goals, and I think I can bring that in. Also, like Denise, when my child started school, I've been on school improvement teams, chaperoned, made copies in the office, whatever it was that I could do to make a better education for him, to make a better environment for him, and this is just the next step of doing that for me. It's just a natural progression.
Okay, thank you. Danielle, we're going to start with you this time, and let's just start off with the most pressing issue that's facing the current school committee, and may face the next school committee as well: the teachers' contract. What is your view on the current dispute between the school committee and the teachers' union, and what would you do to resolve it?
When looking at the current contract, I think, first of all, people have to come to the table with realistic views, and try to negotiate with the best faith that they can. It's understood that this is a very difficult time right now, and that there isn't a bottomless pit that we can run to. And I think, right now, the current contract is about needs, and not necessarily the wants. We all have wants, and, you know, even in my own business, there's things that I would really like to have, but, you know, those things have to be budgeted for in the future. And I think that's the biggest thing with the contract. When I was going over the contract, there were a few things, in comparison to some of the other towns that I was looking at, that could actually be changed. And one of them was Article 2, that goes over the specialists, and that is currently left up to the individual schools in Newport. And that would be a large area that I think could be looked at in the future. Another area could be looking at the co-share of the insurances, which I know has been currently looked at, and looked at, and looked at. But I think that when looking at the public sector versus the private sector, that that is an area that could be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Denise, obviously, you've been through this, but what are your thoughts? What can you tell us about what's going on currently, and what could be done to resolve the issue?
Currently, we have a negotiation team of Sally Black and Leonard Wright, who's working with Bill Ririca Superintendent, who's still the chief negotiator. We are getting closer. I think that we are finally on the same page, that there's one part of money, and that's all there is, there isn't anymore. And like Danielle said, there is not an endless pit. What we've been having problems with is the realization that that money is there, and only that money. What has happened and has progressed is, we have told the teachers, just like we did with Council 94, "Take that money and do it as you please. If you'd like to pay higher co-pays and get more of a salary increase, well, that would be good. If you'd like to do opposite, then you could, but it's just that part of money. And talk with your members in the different staff levels, and see how you can make it all equitable." Council 94 did do that. They took the part of money, they... Every different position got a different percentage of raise, and they worked with the co-pays among themselves. Right now, our biggest achievement is we are talking percentage of co-pay instead of a lump sum, because a percentage of co-pay helps the community. When it goes up, they pay the percentage of our increase. And we have never been able to get any negotiating team to even realize that. And now, they're considering it, and actually, we're getting very close. So that helps the community, because that one number, it just depended on what happened the next year, and that was our problem. So we are making strides, and it's been a rough, rough year. But I think finally, the both sides have come to the table. Things are much more peaceful, for the lack of any other word. And we are really trying to negotiate a fair contract for the employees, as well as for the community.
Okay, thank you. Carol, what's your view on the current dispute about the teachers' contract, and what would you do to resolve it?
Well, I think, first of all, going in as a new committee member, if I'm elected, I would certainly honor and respect any agreements that had been made so far. I think it would be wrong to open everything up and start at ground zero. And as Denise has indicated, she feels they've come very far, and so there won't be that much to wrap up. So I would work to complete the process that's already taken place. I do think it's essential throughout negotiations to remain respectful and professional. We haven't always been very good at doing that. Teachers have to be treated with respect. I respect the work that they do. I respect them as individuals. And that sometimes is more important than salary increases, when people feel that their contribution on the job is valued and respected. So I think we have to always strive to be as professional and respectful as possible. I think we have to, again, focus on what unites school committees and school teachers. Contract negotiations are always difficult times, but I truly believe that more unites us than divides us. We share a common commitment to quality education, and we have to always go back to that common ground, and remember that, and move ahead for what's best for the students and for the town. And I think the teachers are realistic. They do know that the town is in very difficult financial straits. Many of them live in town, many of them pay property taxes in town. They also have spouses who have private sector jobs. They know what co-pays are in the private sectors. I think that it will certainly be possible to come to a fair contract that respects the town's ability to pay.
Okay, thank you. Deborah, your thoughts on the current situation, and what you would do to resolve it?
I like... I brought a pen, so I wouldn't talk with my hands. Now, I'm going to be talking with my hands, with the pen. I like Carol, I don't want to make, and to borrow a comment that Dawn made, I don't want to make false promises, I don't want to make a promise I can't keep, that with the contract being so near, I would not want to make a lot of demands that really upset the negotiations at this point. It has been a long time, we really do need to move forward. I don't dislike the idea of telling them you have a bucket of money. I think that works to their advantage, but I wouldn't... What I would like to see is all of us sitting in the room, talking about that bucket of money. They may be able to come to us and say, "Well, we think this, this," and then we can give immediate feedback and say, "Well, no, this will cost this, and did you think about..." I think I'd like to all sit in the room, have a little bit more immediate feedback, so that we could talk about the things and get them moving forward. I do agree, you know, healthcare's skyrocketing, we just can't continue. And I do believe that they understand that. We can't continue to pay for it. We need to have financially fair healthcare. We need to have, you know, a fair agreement for the town, and I think that they understand that. I think we all here understand that, and I just would like to perhaps move it along quicker by everyone just being in the same room.
Okay, thank you. Sally, your thoughts on the current situation, and what can be done to resolve it?
We've been through, as everyone knows, negotiations, mediations, arbitration, and thankfully, we're back at the table now. We're back at the table respectfully. You don't have to do anything but to watch the news, 700 down again with the Wall Street. It's a global crisis now, and everyone realizes that. We're sitting there trying to figure out respectfully, as I said. I value the teachers, the most difficult vote... One of the most difficult votes I've ever taken in the four years was not to vote for a contract for them, because I agree with Richardson, they should all start at $40,000, we can't do that. But I knew what was in the town budget, I knew what the town meeting had voted for, and it wasn't going to work. So now, as we said, we're back at the table. We have to remember, it's not just salary and co-pay, it's doctors' office visits, it's language, it's pages and pages. And as you said, one little line can just throw everything off. Does this cost, does this not cost? We have been doing that. The finance director's in there, right away, he'll say, "No, that won't work, it's going to go over," because as Denise said, we can't go over. We just have that money that was voted on by the people, and we have to stick to that. So I'm very hopeful, it's been going quite well. But as I said, we're down to one page of language, and that is huge, that is really, really exciting. So let's hope everything works out.
Good, thank you. Denise, we'll start with you this time. Two schools will be vacated in January, when the new Fort Barton and Pecassett Schools reopen. What do you think should be done with those properties?
Well, at this point, I think that the school department should still keep that in our possession. Each school right now will hold 333 children. Our elementary kindergarten and first grade is starting to increase in numbers again, when it was kind of bottoming out, and actually decreasing in the middle school years. I think we should keep it only because of the new development that the town is talking about, the estimated amount of children that are coming into town. When we planned this, we really thought, we projected for 20 years, and we really thought that this would be adequate, not knowing that all this new development may come in. I think we should keep it in our possession for this point, but not use it. Non-quit is probably the most viable place, because it's all ground level. We have openings to the outside in all the rooms, which means we could use them for kindergarten and first grade. Ranger, the front of Ranger, I cannot see using that. A lot of the problem with Ranger is the front of Ranger. It's a wood building, it has very bad wiring, very bad fire access. But the back of Ranger is fairly new, all has access to the outside, and we could also use that for the overflow. So for this point, and not forever, but just to see what's happening on the town level, see other developments going, we should keep those two buildings in our possession for this point.
Okay, thank you. Carol, your thoughts on the two schools that will be vacated, when the new schools come online, and what should be done with those properties?
I think those properties should be turned over to the town, for the town council to decide whether they could be reused for another town function, or whether they, excuse me, should be sold to reduce the tax burden. We had an elementary facilities committee that determined that these buildings on these sites were not candidates for renovation or expansion, and they're not going to become more suitable with time. The cost to maintain and secure these buildings is not money well-spent, in my mind, because we have trouble right now maintaining the buildings we are using. We have leaks in our current buildings, we have toilets that don't work. We don't have the extra money to maintain and secure buildings that we are not using, and that really, should we have a need for more classrooms, these would not be buildings to go to. Deb and I have spoken about this. If we need more classroom space, it would seem to make much more sense to bring in portable classrooms, or to build on to the new Ranger building, so that we have equitable educational facilities for all elementary-age students in town.
Okay, thank you. Deb, she's precluding your answer there a little bit, but what do you think should happen with those properties?
Well, I was on that elementary facilities committee task force in 2003, and we really did look at all of the schools to determine whether they were, we could renovate them, you know, what we could do with them. And, you know, there's not only did we determine educationally they were substandard, the rooms are too small, etc. There were code issues that we did not address, because we obtained waivers to use them now, only because we were building three new schools. So I also think that, you know, they're just not going to meet the educational needs of the district anymore, and that I would turn them back over to the town, for really for the community to decide what they want to do with those buildings. And as far as the growth, projections are tough. They're only good about five years out. So it's really tough to know when that even will hit, and how much. So I, like Carol, would be in favor of looking for another alternative, maybe consolidating, you know, taking a music class and making it a classroom if we have to, or adding on to the new Ranger, instead of putting it into a schools that we've already determined were substandard, and we built new ones because of it.
Okay, thank you. Sally, your thoughts on what should happen with the two schools that will be vacated when the new schools open?
Yes, yes. First, I'd like to say, the good news is, I went on a tour of the new buildings today, and they're absolutely amazing. I'd like to thank the citizens of Tiverton to be so generous to education. And I will say that I do attend the planning board meetings, and what I do when I go there is, when a large development's coming, I stand up to get on the record, and I say, "How many units, how many bedrooms, how many anticipated children?" Now, the average of the industrialization in the United States is the highest, 2.02. Now, Borne Mill is definitely being built right now, it's 275 units. The rest of them equals to 500 altogether. We don't know when those will come in because of the economy, but for sure, the Borne Mill is coming in. Now, last night, the town council meeting, there was a motion, it was brought up by Brian Mederos about these buildings, and there was a motion made for the town administrator to get, together with the superintendent, just a preliminary talk about what we might want to do with those buildings. So as I say, with the growth coming up, I know, as Denise said, Ranger School, but non-quit is compliant, we might be able to use that if we need to. Also, we could look at Little Compton, they're having some building going on, perhaps they might want to use one of them, something like that, some kind of small regionalization, which is what we all look forward to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Danielle, what do you think should... I don't want to forget anybody. What do you think should happen with the two schools that will be vacated when the new schools come online?
My understanding was that the schools were not usable, and that was the whole point of building the new schools. So in formulating my answers, it was always an assumption that we couldn't use those. I was not aware that the rear portion could be used, but that being the case, I would turn those back over to the city, and possibly for sale, or reallocation for other use within the town. The great thing about having a large commercial property of that nature is that it does have the infrastructure, you know, with the parking and with the large septic system, that that actually carries an extra value, whether it be for reallocation or to be sold. So I think that would be my answer.
Okay, thank you. Carol, we'll start with you this time. With major infrastructure needs being addressed with the construction and renovation of Tiverton Schools, what would your top priority be as a member of the school committee in terms of making sure the district continues to improve academically, which is something that you mentioned in your reasons for running?
Right, well, the primary goal of any school committee should really be increasing student academic achievement, and monitoring the achievement levels. So you need to set goals. Of course, many of our goals are set for us by state and federal mandates, but we do need to discuss as a community what our specific district goals are for our students, what kind of skills or educational experiences we feel they should have, and the community needs to be involved in coming up with those strategic goals. And let me get back to the question about...
...that academic, what would you do to ensure that the district continues to improve academically?
And then, so you have to set your goals, and you have to monitor them, and you have to collect your data, you have to analyze it, and you have to have some accountability. If we decide that we have these goals, we have to make sure that they're either met, or if they're not met, that changes are made, whether they're in personnel, or curriculum, or available technology, or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Deb, what would you do as a member of the school committee to make sure that the district continues to improve academically?
I'm going to repeat some of what Carol said again, but I do think it's really important that you have priorities and you have goals. It should never be your budget driving your goals, but your budget supporting your goals. So without those, without determining what our priorities are, it's really difficult to make good, objective, data-driven decisions. I think some of the things we can do to improve academics is, let's engage our kids more. I think anyone knows, a kid that's engaged is going to just pass the test as a byproduct. It's not going to be something that you need to teach to. We need principals looking at the classrooms. We need teacher evaluations that are making sure that we know what they need, when they need it. Do they need professional development? And if there's not a good fit there with a teacher, we need to make sure that's addressed as well. But it all has to start with having priorities, so that we know what we're all talking about. And I do agree with Carol, wholeheartedly, that the community has to be involved in that. We have to meet with our parents, meet with people outside the community, the administrators, the teachers. What do we want our schools to be?
Thank you. Sally, your thoughts in terms of your top priority as a member of the school committee in terms of making sure that the district continues to improve academically?
Yes, well, I served on the Curriculum Alignment Committee at Duffey High School when the MCAS came in. So of course, we have to align our curriculum with the test, so the children will be successful. It's very important that they feel successful, but that's only the beginning, because it's body, mind, and spirit. We teach holistically at Tiverton, we teach the whole child. We reach and we teach, and this connection is a circuit through which the mutual respect and learning occur. As a teacher of an alternative class, I realize that connection, that's why the Rhode Island Department of Education has started the personalization piece, because they want every child to be connected to someone in that school. My children were fortunate enough to always be. The coaches were amazing, everybody that was there. But that's for every child. And we also have to remember, it's a public high school, it's a comprehensive public high school. It has to provide a career path for every child that enters through that door. It's not just for AP and honors, it's for every child, especially in this economy. And if we can get them jobs when they come out, even in the business department, which keeps shrinking, and I keep fighting to keep it there, as Denise knows, every time they try to cut that. I was in front of the budget committee, 11 men, my friend and I, they started to cut the budget. They wanted to cut the nurses, family, consumer science, math, remedial math. I said, "Wait a minute, that's enough, stop right there," and they all went like this, because I had never said a word. So I explained to them how we needed those things, and it was a good career path, as I said, and they did get a little laugh when I said, "What would Legasi say, if you cut family and consumer science?" So that kind of broke the ice. But it is a comprehensive high school. The tests are very important, but that's only the beginning.
Okay, thank you. Danielle, what would your top priority be as a member of the school committee in terms of making sure the district continues to improve academically?
Being new to the school system, I wanted to know, overall, how are we doing? And I was a bit disappointed, not necessarily just in Tiverton, but actually in all of Rhode Island. And I know it has improved, because I went back years and had been looking, and I do give them credit for that, and I'd like to see that trend gradually improve. I do think there has to be standards that are set, and there has to be these goals that need to be met. The accountability is an integral part of that, you know, there needs to be follow-up on this, okay? Here's our goal, let's come back, what can we do to improve upon this? One of the ideas I had initially had, when I was thinking about this, was looking at how to involve the town more in the school system, so that there would be this rallying cry behind these kids, so they don't feel alone. I was a little taken aback when I was looking at the AP scores, that only 29% were taking it, and then 54% were still only getting college credit. That's only a third of the class. That's only a third of the class that took it, and then only a half of that third, which these are the best and brightest theoretically. So I was just really surprised with how things have been going, and that is improved, and I would like to see that trend improve.
Okay, thank you. Denise, what would your top priority be if re-elected to the school committee in terms of making sure the academic continues to, the academic, the district continues to improve academically?
And we have improved considerably within the last few years. Right now, we are working on a strategic plan. It's a five-year strategic plan, which the school department has had now for maybe 15 years. Our strategic plan is up for renewal. The committee consists of administrators, teachers, community leaders, school committee members, and that's what they do. They look at where we are now and where we'd like to be in five years. And every school committee meeting, once this gets in place, we start discussing what our plan is and where we're going. Right now, we are dealing with high school reform and middle school reform. Our high school reform, we have given an initial plan. We have still have, we did not get approval on a few things, but we are working on that. And that's the education piece, the writing comment assessments, the student advisories. So as a school committee member right now, we are looking forward, and we are trying to improve, especially the high school reform and the middle school reform. And once we get that strategic plan in place, that helps the school committee to focus and see what our goals were and have we met them. And at that point, people are accountable, reports are submitted, and the students also know where we're going.
Okay, thank you. Deb, we're going to start with you this time. With everybody talking about economics, saving money, budget negotiations, Sally kind of prefaced it a little bit with maybe with Tiverton doing some small regional efforts. A lot of talk of sharing programs, services, and facilities has been going on, particularly in this election year. Do you support regional educational efforts and be as specific as possible about what you would or would not support?
Absolutely. I mean, anything that we can use to save costs, to be able to, you know, put that to a greater need, I would. The kind of things that we can do are the kind of things that we already are doing. You know, we have a healthcare collaborative. We have a regional special ed collaborative. I would like to see, can we do things with the town? Can we share DPW? I mean, we already were doing trash together, but can we do other things? Can we possibly look at other schools? And can we share teachers? We have AP courses where we have a small population, they have a small population. Is there any way to do some sort of video conferencing? We do that all the time at my firm, that we can share those sort of costs for those sort of, I don't want to say low enrollment, because I'd like to see them higher, but the reality is low enrollment kind of classes, we can share a teacher. I would not, certainly not be against sharing administration, if it makes sense, if it's not going to hurt the educational quality. I would want to look anywhere and everywhere we could to regionalize, and they've done a good job already of starting to do that, but I definitely think we could go further.
Okay, thank you. Sally, would you, you mentioned Little Compton as maybe a small example of that. So specifically, what would you or would you not support in terms of regional educational efforts?
Yes, last year, Chad Wells and I went down to Little Compton to see if they wanted to come in on our food service. It would have helped them, but they weren't ready for that. Economies of scale, boat purchasing, we do a lot of that. They mentioned that. We get together with the Rhode Island Association of School Committees or with the state whenever we bid. We have the governmental health trust. We really have to look at every single thing now. In fact, there's an energy workshop tomorrow we'll be going to, Mr. Rierich and the finance director and the buildings and grounds. We have to step outside of Tiverton and find out wherever there are cost savings in regionalization of services. And I was at a conference one when Kennedy said, "We should look into the larger states and see if we can stop buying with them." So things like that. As far as regionalizing all the schools, you lose the small learning community in that way. All I can think of is just one big team on the island. So many kids would be left out, and we all have our wonderful teams and our pride, so that would be. But as far as working, we have to look at everything. We really do.
Thank you. Danielle, what specifically would you support or would you not support in terms of regional educational efforts?
I think the biggest thing is purchasing. When you're looking at overall, I mean, the voters have already spoken, and they didn't want everything being smushed into all these. They want their individual schools and their individual neighborhoods, and there's no way around it. Those are brand-new buildings. We can't change that at this point. But as for purchasing, that can all be worked on. I know they're doing the healthcare collaborative, the cost share with the services for the food, I think would be an excellent idea that...
We took that, yeah.
Yeah. And I know they're doing that with the gas or electric as well, for the fuel. It sounds like if you can get a whole group of the schools together to talk about it, that it would be a great way to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Denise, in addition to purchasing, are there other regional educational efforts that you would support? And why or why not?
This special ed is a big one, and we are doing that. We belong to the East Bay Collaborative, and our business managers meet monthly, where they do share information on what's the best price they get, and they try to join in. Right now, we're doing health insurance, electricity, office supplies, custodial supplies, fuel and oil, natural gas, special ed, food services. We are working on, like Sally said, and I think that will happen. Special ed transportation is also part of the East Bay Collaborative. The town has joined us with trying to get our fuel costs. They are also trying to get our health insurance. I support these monthly meetings where they go there, and they brainstorm, and they find different ways to reduce everyone's cost.
Okay, thank you. And Carol, what kinds of regional educational efforts would you support or not support, and why?
Well, I think, as everyone else has said, we really have to look at everything, whether it's personnel sharing and/or buying cooperatives. I think in terms of the buying cooperatives, there has been a lot done throughout the East Bay. We need to take it to another level now. We need to think about statewide buying cooperatives. Statewide healthcare cooperative, for example, that might include all municipal employees statewide and private-sector employees as well. I know there's work being done now on just that issue, and a group has formed that is both private sector and municipal employees. Same would go for buying cooperatives. As a Massachusetts school librarian, I'm part of a regional library buying cooperative, and the discounts I get on books and supplies are deep ones, up to 46%, so much so that I have teachers throughout my building coming to me when they're ready to buy a classroom set of books and asking me to place the order for them through my cooperative, because I can get them a much better price than they can get through any other means. And so we have to just keep moving further in that direction. You know, East Bay cooperatives are great, but Rhode Island itself, as the state, is very small. We might even think about joining cooperatives that include southeastern Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the time we have for this forum with Tiverton School Committee candidates. This forum and similar forums we will be holding with candidates in other contested races for local and state offices will be shown on NCTV 18, Cox Channel 18, a number of times before Election Day on November 4th. I'm Sheila Maloney, and on behalf of the Daily News Editorial Board and NCTV Access Group, thank you for watching, and good night.